Good morning, everybody. We welcome you to the October 28th, 2025 meeting of the Calvert County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Holland if he would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Lord God, we thank you for this day that you have given to us and for this chance to gather, to plan, to celebrate, and, Lord, to decide the things going on in our county. Lord, we thank you for your provision and protection for our county, for the low crime rate that we have here in this, in Calvert County, and, Lord, we pray for the violence and uncertainty that still exists here as well as throughout our state and our country. Lord, we pray for the government shutdown, and, Lord, we pray that you bless those who are caught up in the midst of this, who are suffering because of it, and, Lord, we pray that you bring a resolution to this situation. Lord, as we enter this time of Halloween and All Saints' Day, Lord, we remember those who have passed on before us. Lord, for relatives, for loved ones, for associates, for heroes and saints who have gone on before. Lord, we trust you for life, and we trust you in death, and, Lord, we look forward to the day when the dead in Christ shall rise. But, Lord, we pray for your providence over this time, bless these proceedings, bless those who are here today, and may all things be done to glorify you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
So, thank you Reverend Holland. Reverend Holland comes to us from Dunkirk Baptist Church. Appreciate you coming down and visiting with us today. Some of you may not realize it, but we're setting, we're making history here today. Today is our last meeting in this building. We're going to be moving to the new building for our next meeting, and just thought it was a time to look back on history, a little bit about this courthouse. The, the heart of county government's been in this courthouse for over three centuries. We moved it, the county government started in this courthouse in the 1730s, as near as we can tell. And Calvert County's story began in 1654. That's when we were actually formed, the government. Early sessions moved around all kinds of different places before eventually settling in Batter Town, Battle Town, which was later called Calvert Town. In 1725, the Calvert County seat moved to Williams Old Fields, where a new courthouse was completed around 1732, which is where we are today. So, it would have been presided over by the county justices, affected county commissioners, who were prominent local planters and officials appointed under the proprietary Maryland government. Exact records of the meeting were lost in the 1882 fire, but it likely involved opening the new courthouse and continuing local court business such as land disputes, minor criminal cases, deeds, taxes, and road maintenance. As a part of a small rural county with only a few thousand residents, just think about that. There were only a couple thousand residents in Calvert County back then. These officials were the backbone of early governance. At the time, Calvert's economy revolved around tobacco. In fact, if you look back in the Charter of Maryland, Maryland was formed to grow tobacco to send back to England. If you look back to all the old churches, their ties, when they asked to build a new church, their ties to the state government were in pounds of tobacco. Stores, everything revolved around tobacco in Calvert County back in those days. In 1730, Maryland enacted stricter inspection laws on tobacco. Issues that surely reached Calvert's county commissioners. Colonial expansion, trade regulation, and local governance were the hot topics of the day. The first courthouse burned in 1739 and was rebuilt in 1749. The British then burned that building during the War of 1812. How many of you knew that we were so active in the War of 1812? In July 1814, the British marched through the county, destroying homes, damaging crops, and burning the courthouse, jail, and a warehouse. A third courthouse rose in 1816, and for more than a century, it has stood as a living record of democracy and community in action. In 1777, the commissioners of the tax established to assess and collect property taxes. So, that's where it all started in 1777. Don't blame us. In 1831, the first Board of County Commissioners was created. There were five members appointed by the governor. They were George W. Weems, John Arland, and he looks really good. So, both of you were here. Thomas Billingsley, John P. Walls, and Thomas Rollings were the first county commissioners. Since 1831, hundreds of commissioners have guided Calvert County through growth and change while preserving its unique character. In the 1730s, Calvert was a quiet farming region. Today, it's home to nearly 95,000 residents in the Washington, DC metropolitan area. The issues once centered on roads, taxes, and tobacco. Only one of those has really changed. And those, and now discussions are mainly about education, infrastructure, safety, and environmental policy. As we hold our final meeting in this courthouse, we honor every commissioner who has served here. This building has witnessed the decisions that shaped Calvert County's history. Just think back. We have a nuclear power plant in this county. Just think of the decision that that was in the early 1970s. I was pretty young then, but I don't remember controversy like today revolving around issues. And they literally built that plant, and it changed this county forever. Some things that I remember, the bridge at Solomon's, I believe personally, changed Calvert County more than anything that has happened in history.
I remember when it opened, and this lady told my mom, she goes, "They got a Kmart over there." And I remember laughing, and, you know, in the 70s, you didn't speak. You know, I got the look. I'm like, you know, I was like, what's a Kmart?
But history says that when the nuclear power plant opened, their first revenue check to Calvert County was larger than the entire county budgeted. And the county commissioners at that time had the foresight to put that money towards education, because when I went to school here, and this is my excuse, we had the worst school system in the state of Maryland. And we went from being the worst to the first, or almost first. We didn't quite make first, almost first, because of the foresight of those commissioners at that time that knew that education was where we should invest our money. So, a lot of history's been made in this room and in this courthouse that has shaped and formed Calvert County to what it is today. So, we certainly want to remember those that have served before us and hope that we can carry on that tradition. As we move to the new county administration building, we carry forward the legacy of this place, its history, its purpose, and the people who made it what it is. I want to thank all of you who have contributed to this chapter and to those who will lead Calvert County into its next one. So, our next meeting, we'll see you in the new place. Most of you have not seen it. It's huge, our new hearing room. It's going to be quite a change for us as well as you, because the dais is twice as big as this one. So, I'm going, whoever's president's going to have to call Commissioner Hart if he's still on there, Commissioner Cox, because we tried to create a space that was large enough to hold more meetings. You know how we struggle here sometimes with meetings. Tried to create an environment where we can hold much larger meetings. It's, and it's quite a space. It's very impressive. So, you'll get to see that in our next meeting. But I want to thank all of our staff. Just about everybody's moved in the new building. I think we still have two departments that have not quite moved in, but transition has been very easy, and that's because of the dedicated staff that we have. So, we look forward to serving in that building. I won't be here but for the next hundreds of years. But it's a great, great place, and staff is already talking about how much more efficient things are when you have everybody in one building and you can just walk down the hall or go down a floor when you need to find something, where the last three years, we struggled with staff spread all over the place, and it's been a great disruption, not only to us, but to the citizens for the service we provide. So, we're looking great, very much forward to our new and improved space and the efficiencies that we're going to have for all the citizens that we serve. So, I have rambled on enough, but as I say, we're making a little bit of history here. Since the 1730s, we're going to have a new home. So, thank you.
I was looking at the sign. This room capacity's 90. I believe the new room's like 220. So...
228.
228 is what it is?
Yeah. It's going to be different.
We can have some nice meetings in there next.
Yes. So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda as presented?
I've moved to be adopted and approved. The agenda submitted.
Second.
I have motion to second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Really don't have any public service announcements today. We don't have an animal today from the shelter because of the staffing issue. So, we'll move right on. Our first item on the agenda is proclamations. We have three today. The first one is for Election Hero Day. Commissioner Russo.
Can the Board of Elections come up to the microphone, please? Introduce yourself. Say a little something.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gail Hatfield, the Director for the Board of Elections for Calvert County, and we're excited to be here today.
Kristen Scott, I'm the Deputy Elections Administrator, and like Gail said, we're happy to be here.
Michaela Slaper, I'm one of the Office Assistant Twos.
Lana Byss, the Elections Registrar.
Shari Marianne, Executive Administrative Aid.
Teresa Mulhern, Elections Register.
And Erica White, Office Assistant.
Anybody else? Okay. I want to thank you all for being here. I see some new faces since I was manning booths and counting ballots and opening up the ballots and so on and so forth. But apart from the citation that I'm going to read, I have been involved in politics for probably 35 of my 50 years in Calvert County, and I've worked with Gail and I've worked with Kristen quite often. And I tell you, you all run a tight, tight ship. Every vote counts. It is, you are so secure. You follow the rules. I've seen it in action. I've run in and I've got numbers. I've watched you all open in the morning. I've watched you all close down in the evening. I've always felt that our citizens are very, very aware of what we do in Calvert County with their votes. I have to tell you a little story. I don't know. I think it was two elections ago, I was Chair of the Central Committee, and so I was running around to all of the precincts. And at two different ones, we had a group of men at Northern from Charles County, and we had a group of individuals from Prince George's County. And I was like, what are you, what are y'all doing here? Oh, we want to make sure every vote counts. I said, "You need to get out of Calvert County because every vote counts here." I have seen nothing but ethical, ethical work, ethical treatment of everybody's vote, and you all have been so responsive. I just can't say enough. I can't say enough. Thank you all for what you do. And Calvert County, we've got a good group here. So, thank you very much. Okay. Whereas Election Hero Day honors election officials, staff, and poll workers who ensure safe, secure, smooth, and accessible voting experiences for all Americans. And whereas their work reflects integrity, dedication, and professionalism, and carrying out one of our most fundamental democratic processes. And whereas these efforts enhance voter confidence in free and fair elections and protect the democratic values upon which our nation is founded. And whereas Election Hero Day is a national, nonpartisan observance recognizing the contributions of these individuals. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners hereby recognizes November 3rd, 2025 as Election Hero Day. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners calls upon all citizens to acknowledge and thank these Election Day heroes for their service to the community and to the nation. And this is given under our hands and sealed this 28th day of October, October 2025, signed by all five county commissioners. I think that November 3rd threw me off. I'm like, we're still in October. Here you go. Thank you all so much.
And just in case you forgot, there's an election coming up next year. I bet you they're looking for some judges. So, anybody wants to commit a day, please sign up.
Yes.
Our next proclamation is for National Association of Counties, Operation Green Light. Commissioner Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have anybody here that wanted to get us started?
Yeah, Pat McCoy.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Patricia McCoy. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Calvert County Commission for Veterans and Military Families. And we are here today to promote and honor our veterans with the Green Light Initiative. The Green Light Initiative is we're asking everybody to light their homes up green for the week of November the 4th through the 11th to say thank you to all the veterans here across the nation and in Calvert County. So, on behalf of the county, of the Calvert, the Commission for Veterans and Military Families, I would like all the veterans out here to come up here with me. Come on up, folks. We got a great group of veterans here in this county. And on behalf of the commission, I know we gave y'all some green lights last year, right? Well, you're getting them again. Okay, so here we go.
Jennifer Foxworth, the United States Navy.
Carol Santavasi, United States Air Force.
John Santavasi, United States Air Force.
Robert Berry, US Air Force.
Robert Conner, United States Army.
Ron Lavender, Senior, United States Navy.
Yay!
Go Navy, beat Army.
Good morning. Jill McGinn, United States Army.
Steve Susack, US Navy.
Jeff King, United States Navy. Go Navy.
Commissioners, we want to thank you. Ed Sullivan, Division Chief, Calvert County Office on Aging and Community Resources, also a member of the Calvert County Commission for Veterans and Military Families. Thank you for recognizing the veterans that are here today. We're so appreciative of our commissioners. I'm going to make it for your support of these veterans. And it's ongoing support. After the next proclamation, I want to thank you specifically for some things our commissioners have done in the county on behalf of veterans. I'm not going to take the time to do that at this moment, but veterans, thank you for being here. I do want to thank Mr. Mark Brickell, who has been instrumental in getting the veterans here today also. But anyway, we were just very thankful. Thank you for your support of our nation's veterans.
You guys hear this a lot. People say it's a true honor, but it truly is an honor. We would not be here without you folks. I mean, there's no question. All you have to do is turn on TV for five seconds. If we didn't have the United States military in those, in our families, wouldn't happen. And, and, you know, you see what happens around the world with natural disasters. Now, with this storm out there, our military, you know, will be instrumental in saving lives with this. I remember, I remember listening to a president talk one time, and he was taking a beating about, about how much money was being spent on the military. And he said, "You don't understand. We have the most highly-trained, specialized force in the world. And even if other countries had the capability to help, they don't. They sit there on the sidelines and always watch us go in first. But we knew, we know we're doing God's work." When we had Katrina and things like that, it's the people in this country and the military putting their lives on the line, away from home, away from families. I mean, I don't, you guys are the real deal. You know. And I just want to say thankful, thank you to everybody, families, people that served. I mean, when a loved one goes away, the family's with them, you know, waiting for them to come home, you know, and to come home safe. So, I can't say thank you enough. We, as a county, can't say thank you enough. And I want to read this for you here today. It says, "Whereas the National Associations of Counties, NACO, Operation Green Light Initiative is a nationwide program designed to support veterans, active military personnel, and their families by increasing awareness of the challenges they face and recognizing their contributions to the nation. And whereas November 4th, 11, 2025, has been designated Operation Green Light Week, during which counties across the United, across the United States will illuminate buildings and landmarks in green to show visible support and gratitude for veterans and military personnel. And whereas Calvert County, Maryland, honors the sacrifices and bravery of those who have served in the United States Armed Forces and recognize the efforts of Calvert County Commission for Veterans, Military Families, in advocating for veterans' services, benefits, and well-being. Whereas the Calvert County residents are encouraged to participate in Operation Green Light by displaying green lights in homes, businesses, public spaces as a symbol, is our unified appreciation for the service of our military veterans and active duty members. And whereas the Calvert County Board of Commissioners expresses their commitment to continuing efforts that promote the health, welfare, and recognition of our veterans, including the provision of vital resources and opportunities for those who have served. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners stands in support of NACO's 2025 Operation Green Light Initiative, expressing profound gratitude to our veterans and families. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners extends its deepest appreciation to the Calvert County Commission for Veterans and Military Families and their ongoing dedication to serving our veterans' needs. Given our hands and seal this 28th day of October, 2025, signed by all five Commissioners."
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank y'all for working on that.
Keep it straight still.
I feel like I'm real.
Thank you so much.
You know what? I'm wondering if they're not different manufacturers of flags, because the point of the leaf is up on this one, that's what it's supposed to be. It's probably the manufacturer, if I had to, if I had to guess.
Just want to remind everyone about the Veterans Day services here at the county courthouse, starting at 10:15 on the Veterans Green and at the Veterans Memorial Park at one. So hope to see you all there.
So the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for National Veterans Small Business Week. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy McAdams, Business Retention Specialist, and I'd like to say a few words on behalf of Economic Development. From November 3rd to the 7th, we will join the nation in observing the 12th anniversary of National Veterans Small Business Week, recognized by the US Small Business Administration. Here in Calvert County, our veteran business owners exemplify service, ingenuity, and community leadership, creating jobs and strengthening our local economy. Through the Department of Economic Development's Salute to Business Campaign, we invite residents to read and share inspiring local stories or submit a veteran entrepreneur for recognition at www.choosecalvert.com/veteran. We are honored to recognize members of our veterans' business community who are present in the audience today, and thank you for your service and continued contributions.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, Commissioners. My name is Jeff King. I am the co-founder and president of Varium LLC, based here in Owings, Maryland, going on seven years now. We're an IT and cybersecurity services provider that serves federal agencies that implement national security for all of us. I'm also a proud plank owner. You guys recognize maybe the face. Proud plank owner. It's good to be back in this room of our Veterans Affairs Commission, now Veterans Military Families, and gave the first address and annual report right there at the table. So this is a great day for me personally. On a personal note, three thanks. I want to thank you for the opportunity to do that, to serve this community in that capacity. And it was only through Family Health that I had to not seek reappointment, or I'd be right back at it. I miss this, and I miss these people and the leadership here. So I just want to take a moment just to say personal thanks for that opportunity. Secondly, I want to give thanks, Julie, Kathy, Economic Development, your leadership provides a thriving area for small businesses. I'm seven years strong now, and God willing, I'll get another seven years out of this. But Julie, outstanding pick, outstanding pick. Our Economic Development Team, Kathy, everybody, super strong, your leadership on this initiative. Thank you for continuing to support national small business, veteran-owned business this week. I participated in CSM with a panel with all of, all of you a couple of years back. It provides all the business owners a platform to connect with resources, even voice some of our challenges to you. It gave us a platform, gave me a platform to speak to you directly, what kind of things are your challenges? So that's information you guys need, you know, when you make informed decisions. I'd also like to thank Jennifer Moreland, Community Resource, another department head, super strong. You guys, well, well done. She is outstanding, and we wouldn't have gotten it off the ground without her support and her team's support. Lastly, and in closing, I, I know that resources are limited. So your job as leaders in this county is to prioritize, where are those dollars and those efforts and those initiatives go? Thank you on behalf of the men and women that are here, our nation's veterans. Thank you from personally for continuing to prioritize this nation's veteran corps. This is part of the fabric of our community, and an important part, I might add, humbly submitted, as one of those. But we want to thank you collectively for your support, your leadership on this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come, come on forward, come forward.
Sir, come on forward.
Jennifer Foxworthy here again. Served our great country in the United States Navy for 21.7 years, and I am a small business owner, women-owned, service-disabled, and it is an honor to be here before you. I have two businesses, a nonprofit, Unstoppable Ministries, where we provide services to individuals and families who are affected by domestic violence, human trafficking, and homelessness. And we collaborate, it's collaboration over competition. And that's what we like to do. We like to lock arms and jump into trenches with all the other agencies and organizations. And I'm also a corporate trainer, motivational speaker, and that's my business, my for-profit business, Inspirationally Speaking LLC. So we really try to make a difference in Calvert County and beyond. It's unpleasant topics, but it's necessary. And again, we can't, one agency, one organization, we can't do it alone. And the only thing that I would like to encourage, I'm a transplant here by way of my last tour. So I was a substance abuse program counselor at the clinic at the Naval Air Station Potuxent River, serving our service members and their families who are struggling with addiction and dependency. And because I'm a transplant here and not born and raised, it's, it can be sometimes difficult to penetrate through the, the small circles. So when you see a veteran in our business, please welcome us with open arms and collaborate with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Mark Brickell, and I am a United States Marine. I didn't hear many in here, but it doesn't take many of us. I'm here wearing a few covers and hats this morning. In 1990, I was recalled back in the Marine Corps for Desert Shield and then Desert Storm. And I worked, been up at Calvert Cliffs for 30 something years, and I can remember when I was recalled, how the community came together, and we got our barn flag, and the community reached out, really helped to take care of my family in my absence. And you fast forward 35 years, and here I am in front of the commission having an opportunity. What, what I'm hearing this morning is that the commission is like the, the head of the family of Calvert County. And we have, I'm here wearing a hat of the, I am the mission director for Capitol Region Honor Flight. Wave your hands, folks. All our Capitol Region. Bobby, one of us. We've been doing this a few years here in Calvert. We're about 27 years old nationally. And the commission, the Board of Education, the Department of Parks and Rec, the Office of Aging, the Commission for Veterans, and more have really come together to wrap us in their arms and look after us and really, oh my goodness, and the Sheriff's Department, and just wrap their arms around us and make us feel like family. And I can tell you, for everybody that lived through the Vietnam War and that timeline, our Vietnam veterans really feel like the heads of the family, the commission, the, all the different departments have reached out to say, we got it wrong, but welcome home. And I really appreciate that from the depth of my heart to all the different groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for what you do. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Sullivan, ex-officio member, Commission for Veterans and Military Families, Character Development Instructor at Calvert Cadet Squadron, Maryland Wayne, United States Air Force Auxiliary. Thank you for the privilege of being here this morning and your honoring veterans. So many times we hear, and sometimes, you know, we can certainly improve, but I want to point out a couple of things that Calvert County Government has done that's good for our veterans. And sometimes it gets lost. I think it needs to be recognized, what Calvert County Government, what our commissioners have done through your staff, the excellent work they've done. I'm going to mention Communications and Media Relations, Erin Low and her team, they've been fantastic in advocating for veterans. Their work to get the word out about veterans and how we can serve them better has been exceptional. General Services, there's an on-watch statue down in Solomon's, and it's a beautiful statue of a Navy sailor down at Solomon's. And your General Services team maintains those grounds in a way that is dignified and respectful of our nation's veterans, and you should be commended for that. Thank you to your General Services team. The Calvert Marine Museum holds a ceremony every year in honor of our nation's veterans, and I want to commend you and your Calvert Marine Museum for, for that. Your Parks and Recreation Team has already been mentioned, but it's worth mentioning again, their work with Honor Flight has been outstanding, Bob Branham and his staff. And on a personal note, Calvert County Parks and Recreation has supported our Civil Air Patrol and our young cadets in this county with hosting the Civil Air Patrol at Calvert County Government facilities. And on behalf of the Civil Air Patrol, we want to thank you for your support of our young cadets in this county. Certainly, Community Resources, Jennifer Moreland, because of you all's support, we have a service down at the Southern Pine Senior Center in Lusby, which is veterans-specific, where veterans can get assistance they need twice a month. It's specifically for veterans. And because of Jennifer Moreland, her leadership, and you all signed that agreement to support veterans in our county, and we want to thank you for that. And certainly, Economic Development, Julie, and National Veterans Small Business Week, her staff, thank you for that. These are, sometimes these things get overlooked. They shouldn't be overlooked. We want to thank the Commissioners for your support, and your staff has been outstanding. None of it happens without your support, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dawn Richardson, Special Projects Program Manager, Calvert County Department of Economic Development.
Good morning, Sheba Smith, Deputy Director, Calvert County Department of Economic Development.
Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development here in Calvert County. And I just wanted to thank all of our veteran businesses for choosing Calvert to be home for their business. And if you know of any other veteran-owned businesses that want to join in our promotions, please tell them to reach out to our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I'm going to put one more on the spot. Mr. Connor, would you like to come up and join us up front also? And your name, Mr. Connor?
Well, my name's Robert.
And how many businesses did you own in the county? Very good. We, we thank you for all you've done for Calvert County.
Calvert County's been good. Me also, as well as St. Mary's each other, you know. We're not a county all by ourselves, you know. So we have competition. So Calvert County's been awfully, awfully good, my family and my brother, because we came up here in fact, with, with any guy. And the lower class of school. Calvert County's been good. And the people of Calvert County was excellent to us. They accepted us. You sounded different. Because when we got here, 1954. I think it's 300 years later, we arrived. And Calvert County was very rural. Just farmers, fishermen, and a few construction workers. But they accepted us. We lived in the same land that they did. And they're on it. And we worked hard, was blessed, and we, we as a family, a toner, we really appreciated Calvert County. I'm getting old, and you're a little bit choked up, when I think about everything that's happened to us. Because the only thing we had was the dirt on our feet when we got here. But the people were good, and they're still good, excellent people here in Calvert County. One of the best counties in the world.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Connor. So, so it's a good day when we can honor the veterans, and also when we can honor them, they're going above and beyond, and now they're starting businesses, seven years in the making there. So it's just a great day. We cannot just do the veterans, but they're going forth and above and beyond. So thank you for what you do. Julie, your team, excellent for what you do for the small businesses, a driver of the community. Mark, we thank you. You didn't say enough about the Honor Flight, but we thank you for all you do for the veterans. But it's just a great day when we can just put these people on a platform and just honor what they do for the community and their service to the community. So thank you all for what you do each and every day. Thank you. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas nearly one in 10 small businesses across the United States are veterans-owned, from main street storefronts to virtual high-tech startups that advance America, veteran-owned small businesses that are a pillar of our economy and contribute to the foundation of our nation. And whereas veteran small business owners possess energy, skills, and discipline further developed by the military service, a selfless commitment to our country and communities, and focused passion on what they do. And whereas we resolve to strengthen our communities, we must empower and support the giants that are veteran entrepreneurs are in our economy. And whereas National Veterans Small Business Week highlights a program and services available to the veteran entrepreneurs through the US Small Business Administration and its resources partners. And whereas Calvert County Government supports and joins in the nation, national effort to help Americans veteran-owned small businesses and ensure that our communities remain vibrant. Now therefore proclaim the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, be it known National Veterans Small Business Week. Be it further proclaimed that we urge and encourage all citizens to learn more about Calvert County veteran entrepreneurs and how they can help them continue their path of success. Given out hands and seals this 28th day, October 25, signed by all five commissioners. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Item one, Compensation Review Board 2025, Compensation Review Board Recommendations. Ms. Ashley.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Ashley Staples Reed, Special Projects Program Manager for the Office of the County Administrator. I also served as the staff liaison for this year's Compensation Review Board. I'll go ahead and have Matt and Donna introduce themselves.
Good morning, Matt Cox. I'm served as the Vice Chair for the Compensation Review Board.
My name is Donna Zupanic, Chairman.
And I do want to take a moment to recognize all of the other members of the board. And I do want to take a moment to recognize all of the other members of the board. First, we do have Mr. Randy Smith. He is in the audience today, and he is your Board of County Commissioners Appointee. He's actually your reoccurring member that is mandated by code. So Randy has served on the past two boards, so. In addition to that, so Matt Cox here to my, to my right, he is also the Board of County Commissioners Appointee. Donna Zupanic was the Legislative Delegation Appointee. Cindy Yeo, who is not here, she is the Democratic Central Committee Appointee. We have Jim Fleishman, who is the Calvert County Chamber of Commerce Appointee, and Tim Jervis, and he is the Calvert County Economic Development Commission Appointee. And we did also have Donna McCrory. She briefly served as the Republican Central Committee Appointee. However, she did only serve for about a meeting, and then she had to relinquish her duties. But I do thank everybody for serving on this board. It was a very fruitful board. So I will go ahead and-
And also, let me just interrupt. I'm very impressed with the diversity within the board and how many of you came together to come up with your conclusions. That's great.
Meetings are well-attended.
That's another good thing Calvert County does. Thank you all for what you've done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead, I'll pass it over to Vice Chair Cox to go ahead and read the memo.
All right. Good morning. You have the memo with you. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I did want to highlight the changes that we have proposed. In the area of compensation for the treasurer, we propose the increase to 115,000, devoting full-time to the duties of the office subject to illness. For the County Commissioner President, increase to 58,000. For the County Commissioners, an increase to 53,000. For the State's Attorney, we did not make any changes to the basis of the calculation for the pay, but we did recommend removal of the salary increase restriction that would have, that currently applies. For the Board of Education Chair, an increase to 8,500. And for the Board of Education Members Non-Student, an increase to 7,500. In the area of benefits, we did recommend for the treasurer, a change to the retirement and pension to be same as the merit employees, to keep this consistent with other political officials in the county. For both the County Commissioner President and the County Commissioners, change to the retiree health insurance to make them entitled to retiree health insurance benefits after 10 years of service without age restriction. Thank you, Ashley. One other change on the, for the treasurer, it was the removal of leave, so no leave is available for that political appointee. And those were the only changes that we had recommended for the benefits. So thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. With the County Treasurer, what was the methodology used for that? I know that it's an elected position, and I know what we've had for the, well over a decade, was hardly part-time as best. So did you all go around to other counties and see what they were doing, and?
We were trying to go, we're looking at Calvert, Charles County and St. Mary's County. And Charles County has elected treasurer, not elected, it's through the government.
Okay.
But, um, St. Mary's County Treasurer makes 76,000 a year. And we've had the, had them come in and tell us what the people are being paid.
Okay.
The deputy treasurer is being paid, you'd want the treasurer to be paid more than the deputy.
Sure.
That's how it came about.
Okay.
And if I could also add, that's why we recommend inclusion of the language, codifying the expectation that it's a full-time position.
It definitely is.
And theirs was a full-time position also?
Yes.
For St. Mary's.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Actions?
Yep. Um, Mr. President, whoops, I lost my sheet. I move that we express our sincere gratitude for the work of this volunteer board and accept the Compensation Review Board's recommendations.
Second.
I have motion second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next item on their new business, Office of the County Attorney, 2026 requests for state legislation. Mr. County Attorney, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Norris, County Attorney. Glad to be with you today. Historic occasion. We're going through the 10 requests for state legislation. I'm going to ask that you take a position on items 1 through 4 and 6 through 10, and then come back to number 5. Most of these you've seen before, so let's go right into it. As a form of government, being the county commissioners, still being county commissioners, you only have the power and authority that Annapolis gives you, so these are very important requests. These have to go up to Annapolis. If they get codified, some of them will show up in the public local laws, the Green Book that is the county code, others will show up in the state code. First request is investing in community infrastructure projects. This is one that shows up in neither of those locations, but because of the form of government, the county commissioners have to seek bond authority. So this is asking you to submit a request for, for capital project bonds. The term of the bond is typically 15 years for Calvert County, so it would be a project that would have a useful life of at least 15 years. We're asking for this one to be submitted with the amount that's being requested being identified during your budget process, so we're going to have to wrap that up in early January, so we have an amount. Item number two is fostering tech investment and job growth. A number of different occasions, Calvert County has asked for different authorities to be able to attract businesses to Calvert County, starting off with tax credits, maturing into pilots, both for projects that create more than 25 jobs and have more than $3 million investment, and also for nuclear power plants and gas export facilities. This is a different one. It follows after the incentive package that the state of Maryland has created, so that they can attract certain tech investment to the state. This is following on that to help them choose Calvert County, as opposed to other parts of the state. Interestingly, there's a lot of talk about how some tech investment might impact electricity rates, not understanding that we're all part of the same grid. Whether you get the project or not, your electricity rates go up. So this is part of an incentive package that would give the county commissioners authority to create some incentives to lure business to Calvert County.
Just want to emphasize where you leave this slide, that, you know, we're in a competitive market, as we always are, and you're competing against other areas that have no taxes or very minimal taxes, and, you know, so it's just a marketing tool. And there's been some, you know, we had some issues with the pilot last time when it expired, but a pilot at the end of the day saves us money. We learn what happens when a pilot expires, so that's why a pilot is very important when you have large tax providers like certain projects. So it's essential that we have a pilot for any new large project that comes to Calvert
Request number three is fair and accountable public service compensation that is setting the salaries of the local elected officials, so that it's not a barrier to those seeking office, because not everyone can afford to, to have this as a full-time job and another full-time job. So you just heard the presentation from the Compensation Review Committee. We're asking to be able to submit that on. I'm not sure that the Commissioners' authority or approval is necessary, because it is required by the public local law that that board meet every four years and report out their recommendations. This is just to belt and boots and, belt and suspenders, make sure that it gets sent up to Annapolis, their report. Request number four, dedicated funding for community safety. We saw this, your board saw this one last year. This is the emergency services tax, where there would be a real property tax reduction from the Board of County Commissioners that equals the amount of emergency services tax that would go to the volunteer fire and rescue company that is, that they're in the first due area for. It would provide compensation for the cows, it would provide compensation for the volunteer dive team as well. Some of those details we're still ironing out, but this is in concept very similar to what you saw last time. Request number five, I'll come back to. Request number six, I'm sorry, did I mix those up?
No, we're on six.
Request number six is a, is a request for low-sap benefit changes, because the low-sap death benefit is currently taxable by the IRS. There's a request to increase that low-sap benefit by $4,000 and make it either a death or burial benefit, allowing the beneficiary to choose. Request number seven is a request that the State's Attorney has, has helped us with in the past with providing a letter of support. When you have a number of people who do rent a VRBO or rent an Airbnb and schedule a rave party with thousands of people coming into your two-acre lot subdivision in Calvert County, it can cause quite a disruption, and there's nothing really effective on the books for today. So this is the request that the state legislature draft some provision that gives the sheriff and local law enforcement, including the state's, turning some teeth in being able to prevent them before they happen. Request number eight is simply changing the name to Calvert Health Medical Center, because Calvert Memorial changed its name back in 2017. You saw this request last year. Hopefully it'll get through this year, because the name change happened. Request number nine is improving efficiency and consistent care of public infrastructure. It's, came from Department of Public Works, so that for the long-term infrastructure, things like water towers that stand for 50 years, they can have a 20-year contract with a vendor that has some consistency, both in the materials and also the personnel, because as you work on that type of infrastructure, the personnel become experienced in how it, how it works and what its deficiencies are, where to look for the problem first. So this is both a preserving the longevity of the infrastructure, but also finding efficiencies in spending, because they won't have to go look for what they already know. So it would allow for a term, initial term of not more than 20 years for those contracts. Number 10 is excise tax relief for aging and disabled population. Excise tax is the impact fee. We've always called it an impact fee, but it's actually a tax. It's what pay, it was paid when you build a new residence, and you're offsetting the initial cost for education, parks and recreation, and other public infrastructure that a residence has. The thought is that for an accessory dwelling unit for the care of a parent that's moving onto a lot that's owned by one of their children, or other types of disabilities, maintenance of family relationships is as important as the, well, the social impact is as important as the financial impact to the county, and it would defer for a period of time the payment of that excise tax, which we call the impact fee.
And there's criteria they have to meet to get that credit?
Correct.
And if that use changes, what you mean in that language is, plain language is, if that person moves out or for some reason leaves and that converts to a just normal residence, then they have to go back and pay it.
Then they pay. Correct.
Correct.
Yes. So unless there's any questions on those nine items, I'd ask for a motion to approve the submission of requests for legislation 1 through 4 and 6 through 10, with the amount of the bond authority being sought, subject to further discussion, and the Compensation Review Commission Board's recommendations being submitted as presented.
I want to ask a question.
Okay.
John, would you do me a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
So the public knows what this is all about. This is enabling legislation that we're sending up. Could you explain the process? Why we're here?
Sure.
What the process is?
So I believe, Commissioner Grasso, you may be referring to item number five. A number of these are though, enabling legislation, so the, the way the state might address the neighborhood problems could be enabling legislation, or it could be a provision in the criminal law. The way that the bond authority is authority, the county commissioners can go take that authority to market and sell some or all of it whenever you choose, depending on what the market is like. So a number of these nine items are enabling legislation, which means that commissioners have to take a subsequent action. Some of them are not. The salaries that are set by state law, based on the Compensation Review Board's recommendations, are not enabling legislation. When the Annapolis acts, it becomes law when the governor signs it on the effective date that's in that bill. So, but I believe we're referring to number five, which we did defer, and we're going to go to right after this motion.
Well, I probably said that wrong. So we put this request in, and our, our senator, our delegates, our delegation, they work within the House and the Senate to get these bills passed for us. Do we have another bite at the apple?
So in a typical year, we will have an evening meeting with our delegation for the Board of County Commissioners to present your items, your request for legislation. The delegation takes those items up to Annapolis, and in the typical year, the county delegates meet as a delegation and vote on which ones they're going to support. They have a submission deadline of the end of the first week of February to submit the bills. They get assigned to a committee. The committee schedules a hearing, and the hearing is typically three to four weeks out from when they get the bill. There is an opportunity for us to testify, and anybody to testify for or against, or just provide information regarding any of our requests at that committee hearing. The committee then will at some point later vote on what they're going to send up to the floor. There's an opportunity for floor amendments at that time. And if the floor votes it to cross over to the other chamber, then it would move over to the other chamber, get assigned to another committee in the other chamber. That committee holds, typically holds a hearing. When it's a local-only request, they may not allow additional testimony, but it's, it's never really straightforward. It's, it's, so that committee will then vote it back out to the floor of the opposite chamber. If there are no different amendments made at the opposite chamber, it goes to the governor to become law. If there are changes, it could go to both conference committee, or either conference committee, or it could go back over to the other committee to concur with the additional changes, or not. And so that's, that's kind of how it gets to become a law. There are opportunities for your public to participate in every step of that process, from committee hearing through the floor votes, and reaching out to their, which are your representatives, your delegation as well.
Thank you. I think it's important for the public to know that this is the start and that's the process, so thank you.
And you're not the faucet of people having access to those in Annapolis, our delegation in Annapolis. People don't have to come through you to get to their delegations. In fact, we saw last year, the sheriff's office, or at least the FOP, did move forward with Senator Jackson to get collective bargaining that never came before this board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve submission of requests for legislation numbers 1 through 4 and 6 through 10, with the amount of bond authority sought, being subject to further discussion and the Compensation Review Board's recommendations being submitted as presented here today.
Second. I have a motion the second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
And I was going to go back to request number five. I understand the two Commissioners that would like to recuse themselves.
I have to recuse myself. I have a conflict. Same here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So request number five is one that was also submitted for last year. It became apparent that the former treasurer was issuing tobacco-borne tax credits that we really didn't have the authority to do. So last year, the Board of County Commissioners submitted requests- So last year, the Board of County Commissioners submitted request for legislation that former tobacco barns be eligible for a tax credit as they are in St. Mary's and Charles County. So those barns that were built as barn dominiums that were never used for tobacco would not qualify for this tax credit, but barns that were used historically for tobacco. And of course, we had some on our farm. They were both for tobacco hanging, but we would also store fertilizer trailer in there over winter time, could qualify for tobacco barn tax credit.
That's correct. And we've had, we've had several citizens reach out to us about this one. You know, part of Calvert's rural character is the tobacco barns and what they were doing was actually using the tax credit to maintain the barn. I mean, they're not raising tobacco at all, it's put to buyout. However, they are part of Calvert's history and that's why this is being brought up.
It's funny too, because sometimes that's the landmark when you're given directions.
Correct.
You'd say, you know that barn that's right there? I mean, I mean, it's just part of the history.
You want to say anything?
I do.
Go ahead.
Are you sure? I can definitely see the value in this and I'm a real stickler with ethics and perception. And it gives me pause that I do have two county commissioners that could benefit from this. But taken as a whole, when I look at the whole community and the benefit that it gives them. I'm, I don't know, you know, you know me. I would hate to see others lose out just because we have two commissioners that are going to benefit from it as well. So I think the good outweighs the bad for me.
That's a fair statement.
Yeah, because I don't want to see Calvert Countyans that are part of our history and have, have really preserved the barns that they could have torn down. And I know that we have some barns within Calvert County that have the, are they quilt markers? Quilt markers? And I know that we're working towards having that be part of a trail within the community. So, so I think the good does that way, the negative for me. Thank you.
For full disclosure for the public, what we're asking you to approve is submission that the tobacco barn tax credit be enabling legislation that would allow the county commissioners to decide the amount of the tax credit, the duration of the tax credit, and then the other provision that's necessary. As a matter of state law, we're asking that the state put caveats on this legislation, that it has to be property that was subject to a tobacco buyout. It has to be located on land that qualifies for an agricultural use assessment and it is used in connection with an activity that's recognized by the Department of Assessments and Taxation as an approved agricultural activity. And of course, assessments and taxation is who does the valuation every three years of each of the thirds of Calvert County.
Thank you for that explanation.
Motion?
We're asking for a motion just to approve request number five being submitted.
So moved, work or you need, so moved to?
That's fine.
Okay.
You going to second?
You.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And the other commissioners are welcome to return.
So in full disclosure, for me, the barn tax credit's $110. Just so you know all the facts.
That's a week of groceries.
For me, it's zero. A spaghetti dinner anymore? What are you talking about, a week of groceries?
I'm shopping, my wife's shopping at the wrong store.
Yeah.
Go Waldies.
Next item on the agenda is we convene as the Board of Health. Someone have a motion for me?
I move to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene a meeting as the Calvert County Board of Health.
Take it.
My motion in the second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Morning ladies.
Good morning.
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources.
Fatina Zamora, Health Officer.
Tammy Halterman, Supervisor with Health Promotions.
Good morning again, Board of Health members, and thank you for the opportunity to present on the state of chronic diseases in Calvert County. Just want to make sure you can hear me okay. Before I go, before I proceed, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Tammy Halterman, Supervisor of our Health Promotions Program and her team, whose work is significant work will be highlighted in our presentation this morning. So our presentation will provide an overview of three diseases, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and cancer trends in Calvert County. And then we will review the current health department initiatives that address these chronic diseases and conclude with recommendations on how we can achieve improved health outcomes for the county. So we'll, we'll start with cardiovascular diseases. So cardiovascular disease encompasses various medical conditions that affect the blood vessels and the heart, and those include heart disease, strokes, and heart failure from longstanding hypertension. And as you probably already know, it is the leading cause of death in the United States as well as in the state of Maryland. And it is, it remains a leading cause of death in Calvert County. So in 2023, over 1,500, I'm sorry, 15,000 deaths were reported from, due to cardiovascular disease in our state. And more males are affected than females and it affects African-American population disproportionately. And in Calvert County, it was identified as a top health concern in the 2020 Community Health Needs Assessment. And because of that, there were efforts in the community to try to, to reduce those rates, but it continues to be an important health concern. So in 2023, a total of 225 deaths occurred in our county from cardiovascular disease. And you can break those down, 195 from cardio, from heart disease and heart attacks and then 42 from strokes, about 14 from heart failure due to high, high blood pressure. And hospitalization rates for heart attacks in the county is about 9.2 per 100,000. So that is slightly below that of the state. And one noticeable trend is that there's a higher rate of hospital admissions for high blood pressure among African-American population. So this slide is intended to inform the community about the risk factors of cardiovascular disease and it's placed there in the order of importance. As you can see, high blood pressure, tobacco use, high cholesterol, diabetes, and obesity are all considered modifiable risk factors. So there are things that an individual can do to try to mitigate the risks that are presented by those. The ones on the bottom, family history and age, well, those are not modifiable and the higher the ages, the increase or the more the risk for cardiovascular disease occurs. And these can be managed by lifestyle changes and medical treatment, that is the modifiable heart disease risk factors. Now, the bar graph on the right and in some other bar graphs that I'm going to show in the next slide, we are going to show data from the state's Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey. And that is self-reported from telephone survey of randomly selected individuals in the state and actually nationwide as well. And it's analyzed and reduced for the state of Maryland. And what that shows is that high blood pressure is highly prevalent in the community. 35.1% of Calvert residents have reported doctor diagnosed high blood pressure. And as you can see, those, it's the third set of bars on the right there, there is an increasing trend for high blood pressure and that is about similar to that of the state. And you can also see that more men are affected than women. So on the next slide, we will show the prevalence of the other risk factors for cardiovascular disease. And on the, on the upper left shows obesity. And the graph there shows that 36% of adults are, can meet the definition of obesity in, in the state. And those are about the same, I'm sorry, in the county, and those are about the same as the rates that are seen in the state. And then the graph on the upper right shows the percentage of adults who were screened and were told that they had high cholesterol by their doctors. And 34.9% of the population in 2023 were reported to have elevated cholesterol. And those trends don't seem to be reducing or decreasing. And then the graph on the bottom shows the percentage of adults that use tobacco. And 11.9 of adults are current tobacco users in the county based on numbers or data from 2023, and those are higher than the percentage of adults that are smoking in the state. So to address out the occurrence of these cardiovascular risk factors, the health department has worked with numerous partners actually in the community to establish programs to address them. And those include programs that promote healthy hearts, programs that promote healthy nutrition, and then tobacco cessation and prevention. So I will only be speaking about the Healthy Heart Program in detail in the next few slides. So the Healthy Heart Ambassador Program is a program that has a duration of a four months and it is run by their Health Promotions Department and they are aiming to improve community health knowledge about the importance of knowing about one's blood pressure and then managing it appropriately if it's diagnosed or if it's determined to be elevated. Next slide.
So they go right to the health department for this?
So actually, they do. So, but the program really starts, the aim is to educate the community through our advertisement campaigns. We advertise this program to them and by doing that, we are informing them about the risk factors for heart disease and that elevated blood pressure is one of those. And if they are eligible, and that means if they have, if they're interested and their income level kind of makes them eligible for programs at the health department, then we enroll them. Now, if they are, if they are, if their salary is slightly higher, we tell them that, you know, you're not eligible for the program at the health department, but we do encourage you to see your physician about this and to get screened for high blood pressure. And we do screen them and if we find that they have elevated blood pressure or elevated blood pressure on that initial screen, then our staff does the right, links them with medical care, either, you know, refers them to the health department if they're eligible based on income or to their primary care provider. And then our, our staff also builds relationships with the health, healthcare providers in the area. And so the people who are enrolled into the program either self-refer after they're, they hear about it in our health fairs or the advertisement campaigns, or if their healthcare provider refers them to our program. And what, what participants get out of this program is that they learn what it is, they learn about high blood pressure, they learn how to manage it, they learn how to measure their blood pressure, they're actually issued a monitor so they can regularly monitor their blood pressure. And then there's a chronic disease nurse, case manager who works with them and links and checks in with them regularly and to make sure that they're doing the right thing and answer any questions that they may have. And as you can see, this is a four-month program and if we have enrollees, you know, the retention rate really falls between 50 to 60%. So it's not an easy, an easy, because they get busy, you know, we meet with them every two weeks, so not everybody is retained. But our staff really works hard to, to retain the enrollees that we have. And what, what the enrollees or the participants get out of this is that they develop confidence in managing their own blood pressure. They also develop a better relationship with their healthcare provider. And I think overall, there's also support from the people who are, you know, going through that same journey with them and it encourages them to really do their best to at least, you know, control their blood pressure. So next slide. So what are the program impacts and accomplishments of this program? Well, it has numerous significant accomplishments. It's been in place for the last three years and we have great engagement with the community through advertising campaigns that they've performed and most recently in healthcare, in health fairs, either at the community or the schools, as well as through mailers that we send throughout the county or throughout all the households in the county. They've also established good collaborative relationships with the healthcare providers in the community and conducted outreach events at high schools to introduce our young people, you know, to cardiovascular disease, the risk factors and how to take care of that on their own. And I think the most significant impact of this program is really for those people who are participants in the program. It really makes a difference in their lives. It prevents complication and the complications are hospitalizations from heart attack, from a stroke, and they could even, you know, they could even die from that. So the program received an annual, receives an annual funding of $15,000 from the Center for Tobacco Prevention and Control and from the Center for Chronic Disease Prevention. And $15,000 goes far. And that's really not enough to, to provide support for all the activities that the health department does for this program. And so those are supplemented by the health department. Next slide. So now I'm going to shift over to diabetes. What is diabetes? Well, diabetes is a condition that occurs when the blood glucose or, you know, or the blood sugar is too high and it's primarily because there's insufficient insulin production by the body. And the bottom line in that is diabetes is important because it can lead to complications without treatment or if it's poorly controlled. And the complications of diabetes are actually heart disease. People could get heart attacks from it. They can develop diabetic eye disease, which leads to blindness over years. They could also develop chronic kidney disease with longstanding diabetes that's poorly controlled or not well-controlled. And then lastly, I mean, I've taken care of these patients personally in the past, so they do develop chronic infections in the bone that could lead to amputations and the amputations really significantly and negatively affect their quality of lives. And so those are just the complications of diabetes. According to the Center for Disease Control, over 38 million people in the United States are affected by this and 22% of them don't even know that they have it because it's silent in the beginning or during the, the early stages of the disease. And in Maryland, over 481,000 people have been diagnosed with diabetes and that is equivalent to about 10% of the adult population in the state. And another 139,000 don't, aren't aware of it, so up to 22% may not be aware of it. There's also another state or another condition called pre-diabetes. So that is the state where the blood sugar may be high, but it doesn't really meet the criteria for being diagnosed as a diabetic person. But over time, if their blood sugar is not controlled, if their weight is not controlled, they will eventually develop diabetes. And in the state, 1.6 million people have pre-diabetes, so that's a third of the population in Maryland. And those proportions reflect, are reflected in Calvert County as well. So in Calvert County, diabetes was identified as a health concern in the 2023 Community Health Needs Assessment and it has led to deaths. So 52 deaths occurred in 2023 due to diabetes in our county. As you can see in there, the death rates are, for the county, is 27 per 100,000 and it's slightly higher, it's higher than the death rates occurring for the state and nationally. And the important thing to note there too is that those rates are increasing for our county and for the state in general, while it's, it's stable for the country. And so diabetes, the other thing.
What would you attribute that to, please?
So the, the rates of obesity are, are high and they probably, it's silent, so they don't necessarily know that they have it until it's too late, Ms. Commissioner.
Yeah, but why Calvert? I mean.
So why Calvert? This is actually something that we've looked at. So our rates for, of obesity is, are slightly higher here. And also there is, so the rates of obesity are higher here, our diet probably. Our diet probably will have to improve as well. And so that, those are basically the, the main things. There are probably other factors that we need to look at. But those are the main things that are occurring in similar counties nationwide that have higher rates of diabetes.
I mean, we see ourselves being overrated in certain cancer groups. And they attribute that to the environment that we live in sometimes. But I was just wondering why diabetes would be?
So diabetes is, the, the main one is weight. So weight and the food intake, so our nutritional intake are the main factors that influence that. There's also family history in there. And those play an equal, you know, equal too. So if we can't do anything about our family history, we could do something about the other factors. I also wanted to point out that having it is expensive. So the actual, the average cost of having diabetes, you know, in terms of cost of treatment, cost of medication, the average is approximately nineteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three. So that is in today's dollar value. And those expenses could go up depending on whether there are complications or of long-term uncontrolled diabetes. Next slide. So this slide shows the, this is also derived from the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three. And this shows that ten point two percent of Calvert residents have doctor-diagnosed diabetes. And those rates look like they were falling for a bit. And then it looks like now it's on the upswing. And if broken down by gender, more men appear to be affected by it than, than women. Next slide. And so given the significant burden of disease, a burden of diabetes in our county, the Health Department has been working with our partners to, and establish programs to prevent diabetes and to improve the lives of those who have been diagnosed with diabetes. So we have two significant and important programs. One is called the Prevention T Two Diabetes Prevention Program. And the other one is the Stanford Living Well with Diabetes. And in the next slides, I'll talk about those a little bit more. So the Prevent T Two Program is a twelve-month program that is designed to prevent, help a person who does not have the diagnosis yet, but helps them, helps prevent the development of diabetes in those participants through lifestyle changes. And this is actually a, a program that has been shown to work by clinical trial more than a decade ago. And this is sponsored by the Center for Disease Control. And the main goal really is to encourage participants to make those lifestyle changes, which are not an easy feat. And that's why it takes the, the support of the life, a, a coach or the facilitator serves as a lifestyle coach. And there's also, they're also working with the other participants who are joining them in that journey. So the main goal can be broken down into two items. It's really to help each participant achieve a modest weight loss. And that is five to seven percent of their baseline weight. And then it also aims to increase or promote physical activity within the participants. And the goal is to achieve one hundred and fifty minutes of, of moderate physical activity for one week. And the result of achieving those is a reduction in A1C. So A1C is the measure that a physician would use to determine, you know, the control, how well-controlled a person's diabetes is. But the A1C is also being used for people who don't have diabetes yet. You know, that is, we use that, that is used to diagnose diabetes. And if it's below a certain threshold, you know, there, if it's within a range, but that's high, but not enough to call, to be diagnosed as diabetes, then it's called pre-diabetes. So the main, main thing is that the program really helps support and support the participants and follow up on, on their progress. And it's a twelve-month program. So it's similar to the other ones where, you know, if it takes, if it's a program that lasts twelve months, retention can be a challenge. But we have hard-working lifestyle coach and program managers that do work, work with the participants to, to retain them and to keep encouraging them to, to get to the finish line. What I didn't mention here is that the recruitment for participants occurs countywide through health fairs and then through mailers as well. And that is our chance to really inform the public about, you know, diabetes, its risks, why we need to worry about it. And then that if they are concerned and they are eligible, they can enroll into the program through the Health Department. Next slide. Now, the other program is called Living Well with Diabetes. So this is a bit of a shorter program. It is for six weeks. And it's open to persons who have already been diagnosed with diabetes. But it's, and it's also open to individuals who may be at risk for developing diabetes or if they have pre-diabetes. And from this program, they learn how to manage their blood sugars through eating healthy and then through moderate physical exercise or physical activity. It is shorter. So, you know, it's also designed for individuals who may not be ready to engage in the twelve-month program, but want to get the information that could be life-saving for them. The other thing with this program is that it's also open to family members of individuals with diabetes. So they don't necessarily have to have diabetes. But if they want to support a family member with that condition, then they can also participate in this program. It focuses on other topics that are important, including stress and emotional management strategies. It also talks about goal-setting, you know, action planning, and, and helps the individuals understand the complications of diabetes. It offers an opportunity for the participants to, to really connect with the people or the cohort in that group that are also taking the course. And they have a good link with the program manager and a lifestyle coach who's also running the program. Next slide. So what are the impacts and accomplishments of these two programs? It's numerous. And I think the most significant impact of these programs are those that directly affect the participants. And so on average, we have observed an average weight loss of sixteen point five pounds for each of those participants. Additionally, the participants of the Living Well with Diabetes have reported increased confidence in their ability to manage their chronic condition. And by doing that, we are helping them prevent the complications of diabetes in the long run. So the Health Department has reached thousands of residents through our outreach events and our advertising campaigns. And through those activities, we are hopefully also making them aware of the, of the condition and how to prevent that or how to manage it. We also instill confidence in them to, so they can talk to their providers more comfortably about these medical conditions. We have partnered with the Calvert Library, as well as the Office on Aging, so that we could, they could help us host some of those classes that are being held through these programs. And the program manager has built strong relationships with healthcare providers who then can refer patients to, to these programs. Okay, next. So I just wanted to, I included this slide because these are actual quotes from the participants. And they show, they do demonstrate the program's impact on those individuals. And because of their participation, they were able to lose weight. They were able to reduce their A1Cs and then achieved a better quality of life for, and, and a better state of health. Okay, now moving on to cancer. So cancer really has been identified repeatedly as a top concern in the county's Community Health Needs Assessment in two thousand and twenty, as well as in two thousand and twenty-three. It is a leading cause of death in Maryland with an average number of deaths of six thousand three hundred and eighteen annually statewide. And in two thousand and twenty-three, two hundred and seventeen cancer deaths were reported in Calvert County. And the most common one is from lung cancer, as you can see there, followed by colon cancer, prostate cancer, and breast cancer. The tables at the bottom of the slide show the incidence. That is the occurrence rate of cancers for colon, lung, and breast in, for ours county and then compared with that of the state and then the rates for the United, for the entire country. So if you kind of, if you focus your attention on the left side of the slide for colon cancer, Calvert County, Calvert, Calvert County's rates are similar to that of the state, and they are falling. So that's the good news. So, and, and we're hoping to see a, you know, continues, continuing decline in those rates. However, for lung cancer, as you can see, the rates are high for Calvert County compared to the, the Maryland or the state's incidence rate and then that of the country. Fortunately, those are stable and don't appear to be rising. Similar for breast cancer, the rates are slightly higher for the county compared to the state and to the, and to the, to the country's rates. And those are also stable. Next slide. So given the substantial burden of cancer in our county, the Health Department, in collaboration with the Maryland Department of Health, established programs in tobacco use prevention and cessation and the Cancer Prevention Education Screening and Treatment Program. And these programs have multiple aims. Primarily, it's to raise awareness, community awareness about cancer prevention. And it promotes screening for colorectal cancer, lung, and breast cancer. And the Health Department also facilitates screenings for low-income populations, as well as the underinsured or uninsured Calvert residents. So our health promotion staff advertises the program through outreach events and then emphasizing the importance of cancer screening for early detection. And why is that important? Well, if a cancer is detected early, it's more likely to be removed and cured rather than, when compared to a cancer that's detected late. And so screening does save lives. The health promotion staff also conducts outreach to healthcare providers to inform them about these services that are available through the Health Department. And, and as a result of that, you know, we do get referrals from those healthcare providers into the, into the program. So low-income patients receive support. Let me back up for you. So if a participant who is screened then gets a finding that may be questionable or could be a positive finding, then our program, and our staff also then links them to a specialist who can diagnose or evaluate those further, diagnose a cancer if it's there, and then initiate treatment if needed. And for individuals who are, who have low income, they can receive support for treatment grants under the Maryland Department, the Maryland Cancer Fund. And our health, Health Department staff really works hard to case manage or provide case management and navigate care for those individuals who have some positive screenings in there or positive findings in their screenings. They also would have to be linked to medical care, linked to treatment. And then if they're treated, they also have to be followed up over a number of years. And so they stay with the program and are in close contact with our case man, nurse case manager. Next slide. So the, you know, so what are the impact and accomplishments of this program? It's numerous. It has numerous important impacts, particularly on the individuals who are screened and especially those who have positive findings in their screening. So as I mentioned earlier, early detection of precancerous cells or precancerous tumors facilitate early removal and treatment and lead to better outcomes and potentially save their lives. So the program also engages in numerous outreach events throughout, throughout the community, healthcare, health fairs throughout the community and at the schools to increase the residents' awareness about cancer in general and the importance of cancer prevention through screening. And our Health Department staff have built relationships with the provider networks to facilitate the rapid referral of patients who, or, or individuals who may have positive findings on their screenings. And then vice versa, we ask the healthcare providers to make referrals to our program if they think that an individual can benefit from the program at the Health Department. Okay, next slide. And so this is our summary slide. So in summary, the Calvert County faces a significant burden of disease from those chronic diseases that you, you were briefed about. For cardiovascular disease, the rates are higher, but they are falling. And so we are hopeful that those will continue to fall with continued, you know, efforts and health education for the public about, about the disease and about its risk factors. And then the continued work of our staff in promoting healthy heart. And for diabetes and cancer, the rates are above that of the, the state and on the rise or stable. And so we will need to continue the same efforts in, to, to help prevent those. And the key contributing factors include tobacco use, obesity, elevated blood pressure, elevated cholesterol. So to help prevent those in the future, we have the following recommendations. So we are continuing to seek funding and support for chronic disease management and prevention services. And with the decreasing federal funding expenditures that potentially impact state spending on, on this effort as well, we're looking at other sources, including local foundations and national foundations for assistance. Our Health Department also intends to continue to work tirelessly to build and maintain trusting relationships with our clients, as well as with our community partners and healthcare providers, so that we can individually assist, you know, clients or patients who are in need of our services. And we have the unique opportunity to continue this work through engagements, relationship building, and transparent communication with the public. We will also collaborate with our community partners to help address social determinants of health because those do contribute to the overall health and well-being of our population. So that concludes my presentation. And I really again want to acknowledge our program managers. We really cannot do this without the leadership of Ms. Tammy Heltman and the hard work of her team. It's a hard work of her, a, a small team with small funding. But they, they do a lot for the amount of funding that we receive. And I just wanted to mention their names in there. So Ms. Katie, Ms. Katie Hammond runs our diabetes and the pre-diabetes program. Candace Smith runs the Healthy Heart Ambassador Program. And Ms. Debbie Schrank runs the Cancer Prevention Education Screening and Treatment Program. We're happy to answer your questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
I have none. We just need to eat less and walk more. Maybe you need to start with me and, and blood pressure and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn the meeting of the Calvert County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion on that motion hearing? None. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Planning, Zoning, Guidance for Rural Legacy Area Expansion Potential Options. Good morning.
Good morning.
There's Walktober tomorrow, if you want more walking.
There's two of them, right?
Commissioner Cox will be right there.
Fantastic. It's costume.
What do you go dress up as?
Golfer.
Amalia Pleak Tam, Environmental Planner with Planning and Zoning, joined by Jen David, Rural Planner, and Ron Marnie, our Environmental Regulator and Floodplain Administrator. We're here to present some options for rural legacy expansion. Would you like me to read the memo or jump straight into the presentation?
You can jump straight in. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Absolutely, sure. So we're here to present four possible rural legacy area expansion options in the mid-eastern area of Calvert County. Maryland's Rural Legacy Program is just one program we use here in Calvert County for land preservation. It is a program to permanently preserve large contiguous tracts of land for natural resource, agricultural, forestry, and environmental protection. As you can see, the green areas are rural legacy areas. They exist in every county. They're not permanently preserved, but land within those green areas are eligible for funding. You would sell the, the landowners would voluntarily sell their conservation easements to the state. The green areas are totaling 1.3 million acres in the state. Of that, about 125,000 acres are permanently preserved, so that's about slightly less than 10%. The goal of this program is to preserve 80% of those green areas. Here in Calvert County, we have two rural legacy areas. The pink is North Calvert RLA. It's 1,333 parcels, or 10,912 acres. The purple is Calvert Creeks RLA. It's 4,748 parcels, 37, 497 acres. The combined 48,409 acres of RLA, of that area, just over 25,000, 25,000 acres are preserved, either by state or county, so they're not all preserved through rural legacy. But that is around 51% of this area that's permanently preserved. Our RLA areas were last expanded in, were last expanded in 2023, and this expansion more than doubled the RLA area. The 2023 expansion focused on including many of Calvert County's priority preservation areas, which is land designated as having the greatest agricultural or forestry viability, and it closely correlates with our farm and forest district. There are several considerations for RLA expansion. It improves land preservation options in Calvert County. It does support our comprehensive plan's goal of preserving 40,000 acres of prime forest and farmland. It facilitates wildlife corridors. It enables more properties to apply for rural legacy funding. Rural legacy is permanent. There is no option for buying out of the program, and it is one of the more restrictive land preservation programs in Calvert County, sorry, in Maryland, sorry. And it may, it may affect property value. So how may it affect property value? It potentially might affect it through the septic law tier map. We're still awaiting confirmation from the state, but if the RLA areas expanded over properties that are, that are currently tier three, they may need to be re-designated as tier four.
And when might we get that back? Is there any timeframe?
I just called Debbie here Cornwell up at Maryland Planning yesterday. Their council was out of office. So Maryland Planning's council is coordinating with DNR's council, and trying to figure out an, an answer on that, and give us some more guidance. I do apologize. I had hoped to have an answer for you today.
To public, that's fine.
Yeah. So just as a, as a brief refresh, Calvert County has four, four growth tiers under the Sustainable Growth in Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012. The tiers are based on local zoning for major and minor subdivision, and defined by the permitted use of onsite septic versus plant sewer. Broadly, tier one is served by public sewer. Tier two is our areas proposed for sewer or locally mapped growth areas. Tier three is large lot rural development. Those areas, you may have subdivisions beyond seven units, and then tier four, you're restricted to subdivisions less than seven units, seven, seven units or less, and there's no sewer plan for those areas.
Can I interrupt you for a minute? I know in the comprehensive plan within the town villages, they don't allow building of more, of four dwelling units per acre within the town centers. Okay? Now, in tier three, it says allow subdivisions beyond seven units. In that type of scenario, how many homes are on an acre?
So tier three, and Ron, help me out here. Tier, tier three is mostly of the rural community district, and so it'd be based on the rural community district zoning per acre. So the one thing that you wanted to, you want to clarify is, is that there's a difference between how many maximum units are allowed at all, versus how many per acre? So.
Yes, because let's say a subdivision was going into 20 acres. Would there only be 20 homes allowed? Would there be 40 homes allowed?
So I'll take a stab at this. You, you have different overlays that are interacting with each other. So in this theoretical scenario of a 20-acre property, and it's going from tier three to tier four, in tier three would have been subject to the base zoning, and it would be four units per acre max, assuming it was.
In town.
In town center. Now, if it goes to tier four, it's a maximum of seven units total. So the, so the loss in density could actually potentially be quite high, depending on the characteristics of the property.
You can have a town center in tier three?
I don't know that there are in tier three town center properties.
Those should typically be tier two and tier one.
Yeah, so not in tier three.
Correct.
So I don't think in tier three, you can have units per acre. It's acres per unit.
How are we, I guess my overall question for tier three especially is, are, are we halting high density in these subdivisions? Or do we have measures in place to make sure we don't have big subdivisions outside of the town centers?
This is being addressed through a lot, this is by and large addressed through the zoning ordinance and the last update that we did. This wouldn't directly go towards managing those larger subdivisions. It could potentially impact them, but the last comprehensive update, which we just adopted in March of this year, addressed that concern.
And when we look at the expansion options, they don't come into the town center areas?
Yes. And I, I know the town center is, is set, but I just, because our constituents do not want high density, I just want to make sure in tier three, we are not leaving ourselves open for high density in those types of subdivisions.
No, I would not anticipate thus leaving us open to that, because again, when we have these different overlaying regulations in districts, most restrictive shall apply. So since we've addressed it through our zoning, the zoning would preclude them going beyond what the county has chosen to allow.
Okay. I'd like to.
I was wondering that too, when I looked at that.
I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that later. I'll give you a call tomorrow, and I want to get the exact language and squared away in my mind that it's not high density.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the, the takeaway of this slide is that tier three properties may be required to convert to tier four, if they're included in the RLA expansion areas. So let's look at the options. The first option is the smallest. It's procedurally the clearest, shortest timeframe, because it only includes tier four. So the tier issue isn't on the table with this option. But it is the smallest option. It's 467 parcels. That's covering 3,520 acres. Option two is a little.
Could you give us some bearings on where?
Oh, of course. I apologize. So this is the middle of the county on the eastern side. Up toward the top is the, you're, at the very top edge of that map, you're hitting on Chesapeake Beach, and the bump out is Plum Point Creek. And I should say also that the, the maps left and right are the same map. It's just the right map is showing the land that's already currently preserved, either through a state program or county program. So those green areas are already preserved. The orange is the, the proposed expansion area.
And the proposed expansion increases the preservation?
The potential for preservation.
The potential or opportunity.
So it's not, it's not automatically, it's not automatically preserving all those parcels, but landowners within that orange area would then be able to go to the state and say, hey, assess my property conservation value and, and sell it to the state.
Well, they just don't have that option now. This would give them the option.
Correct. You have to be within an RLA to participate in the rural legacy program.
For this particular program, but for properties that qualify, MOUTH is an option in any of these areas. So the MOUTH program is eligible in any of these areas currently. And depending on how our local program shakes out, that is, could be another option. So RLA is just one option. There's also one other option you want to be aware of, but mostly that's a, a donation is the Maryland Environmental Trust, and they accept donations of land for under-easement. So that's another option. Those are the four main ones that our office deals with.
Okay.
But MOUTH's not a very viable program in Calvert County.
It is not very popular for, due to the volume and the strictness of that program.
Yeah. We always get outranked by somebody else.
Typically, yes.
So it's really not a relevant program in Calvert.
It isn't, yes. It's not, it, I have had inquiries. There is some level of interest, but I have not, it is not a terribly popular program. Again, just as Amalia and Ron have stated, it is one of the more restrictive programs in what you can and cannot do with your property, as is rural legacy. They are similar in that regard, so that is something to consider.
But generally, rural legacy pays a lot more than MOUTH.
Up to 80% the value of the property. It is definitely the more generous of the two programs.
And when you look at MOUTH and the county program, the county program is.
The better option typically.
This is easy for the person to navigate.
It can, it's, it can be.
Is rural legacy easy for the?
They wouldn't have to navigate it alone. They would be, they would be assisted with staff.
It's a little complicated, but you get 80% of the property value.
But, but we have staff that can assist with that.
And we have a local partner in RC&amp;D that does much of the legwork for us, and that coordinates that effort, and helps us administer the program. And so between the two of us, between our office and, and Jessalyn, and everyone down in, in RC&amp;D, we do have resources to help walk people through it. So, so I don't think that's really a concern if someone is interested.
It can take years to get through rural legacy.
Really.
So the application process itself takes over a year.
Yeah.
But also you can bargain. There's almost like a bargaining component in that. Like if you have a plan, say you have two kids, and you wanted to say, okay, this is my family farm, I want to preserve my family farm, I want to go through rural legacy to do it, but I want two lots out of it. I want a lot here and a lot here. They help you plan along that process.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons that it's a more popular program, at least in Calvert, for, compared to MOUTH, because all that's done upfront and written into the easement agreement, and it's quite functional.
So if somebody walks into your office with that scenario and says, look, I want to preserve my land, what are my options here? Do we have something in place to be able to walk that first and through with each individual process, and you sit down with them? Is that the way that works?
We have, I have done, I have done a couple. I've had a couple, particularly a few that were not in a current rural legacy area, who wanted to, were interested in looking at MOUTH, and I helped them myself. I looked at the mapping, and I figured out if they would be interested, because MOUTH would have been, you know, one of their only options, except for Maryland Environmental Trust, and walked through, looking at the soils requirements and the acreage required, and taking forward all those steps with them to see, to see if they were, if they would qualify.
You can designate two lots in MOUTH.
You can, I was about to say. Yeah.
And the problem with MOUTH is, once the original easement holder passes, the rights to those go away.
Yeah, they, they allow one unrestricted lot, but then they have child lots. So they, they're very restrict on who those lots can go to initially, and then the number you can have, and that those rights do not convey with the property.
In the state program.
In the MOUTH program. In the Maryland Department of Agriculture's MOUTH, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation program.
So for rural legacy, you could theoretically write into it two lots, and then it should not matter whether it transfers, whereas if I were to say, purchase a property, put it in MOUTH, and I die before I, I bought my child, does not get that lot.
And, and you do take a, you know, you would take a, they would value the property differently. You would take a hit based on the number, it's not, but there would be, you would not be compensated as much for the value of the easement, depending on the number of rights you retain.
But you can make it up in different options, correct? If you set aside more buffers, you can.
Not for MOUTH.
No, I'm saying for rural legacy, yeah.
There's, there's a, because of its intended purpose, there's a little bit more flexibility in how you line it out, because they take into account environmental features, not just productive land.
Well, there's federal programs as well. Do we push any of them, as far as?
We have used federal programs and the, federal funds in the past. For FF RP was a program that was used in the past, which money was piggybacked with our, with our local easements, and our federal, and our MOUTH easements. There is money that also comes through the Department of Defense in certain areas, not throughout all of the rural legacy areas, but within a zone designated around the naval base. And I'm not sure that that really, I'd have to check and get back to you, if that really funnels down to the applicant themselves, or if that's just money that comes into the program.
It's a match program. She's referring to REPI. It's a readiness and environmental protection initiative.
South Adams.
Gotcha.
But it, it's, there's a small area that would be around the, the base that's up there near Chesapeake Beach, the Naval Research Laboratory, very small. But the vast majority of it is kind of already covered in the existing rural legacy area within Calvert Creeks. That's in the, within that boundary that extends out from Pax River.
They'll fly out of Randall's Cliffs, that's the difference. Not yet, anyway.
So this is option two. It's a little, a little larger than option one. It is extending the RLA out to our shore. It does include the tier three properties. So the hash marks that you see are tier four, and so the non-hash areas that are covered by the orange are tier three properties that may or may not need to be re-designated as tier four.
Is there a reason why we just wouldn't offer as much area as possible?
Probably because of the tier issue.
I mean, because if a resident has the option.
If it's got to be in tier four.
If it needs to be re-designated.
Individual parcel, you have to designate an area, and everybody in that area now goes to tier four, which means it reduces their build-out.
I mean, I've heard, I've heard people concern, well, was I re-designated as tier four?
Yeah, so, so let's say you got a, a 100-acre parcel, and this person wants to go in that, and then there's like seven other residents there. If they just want to do it, why can't we just designate that parcel? I mean, why do we have to include?
It has to be contiguous.
Yeah, they don't like individual parcels, but they're trying to do a region.
Is that a state, or is that a?
It's a state, yes.
Yes, that's the state purpose of the program, is they want these large contiguous areas, and they're, and the rural legacy program, again, is very focused on natural features, environmental protection, wildlife corridors.
It's why they pay more, it's more restrictive.
That's the key right there, is they're, they're looking for habitat corridors specifically.
If they've got four or five smaller parcels around that they don't want to be in, they have to boot it out. That's a shame.
Yeah, or even if you had two, and this, you know, let's, let's take two, two, two brothers.
Right, right, exactly.
Two brothers. One has 100 acres. Yes, it's a real life example. One that, one does, and one does not. And maybe not that they even own the same piece of property, they may be two right next to each other.
That's what I mean, yeah.
And one has the significant, potential, significant development potential, and one does not. And one is much more concerned about conserving their property, or doesn't have children, and one maybe has several children. You know, they're, or, or even just is interested in, in possibly developing the property. Maybe he's a builder, who knows? There's, a lot of people have, you know, varied interests, and when you're looking at designating a rural legacy area, because of the nature of the goals of the program, moving outside these priority preservation areas into tier three could be impacting multiple people, and it's something to be considered.
Have we done a survey or outreach program to these people who's going to be affected to see?
So we wanted to get your, your guidance on which, which, if any, of these options to, to go forward on. Yeah, the, the public outreach campaign would include the survey. We've spoken with CMR about that, as well as flyers in the school catchment areas of these properties that, that, that these areas would cover. In public, public meeting, we've reserved a room for November 17th, in anticipation of your guidance on, should we proceed or not? So, yeah, there, there's public outreach strategy for this program. We just need to, to learn which way we should go. So, yeah, there's public outreach strategy for this program. We just need to learn which way we should go.
So let me ask you this. So let's say a guy had a hundred acre parcel that's perfect for it. He wanted to do it. She wanted to do it, what have you. And the four, the properties adjacent to it, they didn't really care. They didn't care what the guy does, and they were, say, single-family homes anyway. You couldn't build anything else. Does this affect their property value? I mean, is there, is there a reason for them to say, I don't want him or her to do that because it hurts me? Or do they be like, it doesn't bother me anyway?
Logically, it shouldn't really impact them, and there's even a potential benefit.
It would help you.
Because typically, exactly, because when you're a G...
Because now, you know you're not going to be surrounded by subdivisions.
Well, see...
Which tends to drive up the value of those lots.
When I had my house in Cove Point, there was eighty acres preserved right behind me, and I loved it, because even though I only had like a little less than an acre, there was eighty acres behind me. And that's what I'm getting at, so hopefully the message comes across to these folks of, hey, you don't have twenty acres to do this to anyway. Don't object, because I think if they feel that, hey, this could harm my resale, would be the only reason I would see why somebody would object, but...
It's not clear-cut, a benefit or a detriment. It depends on the specific attributes.
It wouldn't harm them.
In that example, no.
I think in your case, Commissioner Hart, big tracts is more controversial.
Yes.
Right, where mine was a cul-de-sac that butt up to it. And, but I'm sure there's probably other things like that around the county, but I just, you know...
And you're going to have properties that are completely built out under current zoning. But if the zoning laws were to change in the future, they may not be. You also have that, you know, when you're talking preservation, you're talking Rural Legacy, you're talking designating a whole area, you're, you're talking to a big, about a big commitment.
Yeah, because we have had this in the past. We've done, well, I've been here two expansions, but before I started with Calvert, near ten years ago now, they had done an expansion, and there actually was a property that was tier three. It was a larger tract. And it was not known to the county at that time that it would have to be converted, and the state did force the conversion. That's why we're in talks with both MDP and DNR. DNR is in concurrence with county staff in that that is not the correct interpretation. And so we're facilitating conversation between their two AG staffs to try and get a better option, because if that's not going to be an issue, then everyone can just have the option to preserve their property. It works for everyone. No detriment.
And among the county and among the agencies, we would like to have clarity.
Yes, but, because if you look at Fish Creek Watershed, some of the largest privately-held land holdings are there. And some of those may be able to be connected, because the land's already been developed in between.
Would you like to see the other options? Because they do get, they expand into that area.
Bring it on. Because that's what we're trying to get to.
Option, so option three is larger still, right? It's still involving tier three properties, so that hiccup is on the table. It's also involving an additional hiccup. It expands so far north that it's now within the one-mile radius of Chesapeake Beach. So that municipality is now entitled to a forty-five day review of the application. So it's a very tight window when we look at the February, you know, the quickly approaching February deadline that our partner RCND needs to submit the application to the state. They would, Chesapeake Beach would need forty-five days to review that application. So option three has two hiccups, the tier three issue and the forty-five day time requirement. But that is a larger option. It's one thousand six hundred and fifteen parcels. That's eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight acres. And it is, again, it's expanding into the Fishing Creek Watershed at this point.
And is that, is that tier three?
Yeah, so that, those, that large area that's not hashed is tier three.
I, the problem I'm having with option three and four is the ramifications of tier three being included. How much build-out is that going to be? And I, I need to know that before I make a decision, because...
Tier three, tier three should be five acre density. Because tier two is for water and sewer expansion.
Correct.
So you shouldn't have any tier three until you get close to the beach. And I don't think the beach has any ideas of expansion. I think they would welcome protecting Fishing Creek based on current discussions going on there. But the goal was, you know, we started this whole process, as I said, because some of the largest tracts left in Calvert County are in that area. And it's unfortunate that they weren't tier four from the get-go, but it would be interesting to take a peek at, see what's left in there. There certainly shouldn't be any tier two.
No, there's, there's no tier two.
So it's tier three, and if you look at the density rate for tier three versus tier four, what does that really look like? Because it's not units per acre. It's acres per unit. So for those large tracts, tier four definitely is an impact. But for those large tracts, what they can get out of Rural Legacy, at the end of the day, you get that money and keep your land too. That's not a bad incentive.
That's a win-win, especially if you're not looking to do any, you know, building, what have you, or...
There are a lot of watersheds in there, other than just Fishing Creek as well, that are being protected.
Yeah, so Plum, Plum, Plum Creek, Plum Point Creek Watershed and Hunting Creek are the two southern watersheds that are affected. And so then with, with the option three and four, that's when you start getting into Fishing Creek Watershed.
So even though it would be tier three, which like Commissioner Hand said, one home per five acres, even at that, if someone would submit to build a home because of the water involved and all of the regulations with that, that could also take away some land that could potentially be developed, but it wouldn't be developed because of the environmental impact. Am I correct?
That is correct. You'd be looking at the gross versus the net acreage.
Okay.
And a significant portion of all those are in a critical area, correct?
Yeah, critical area takes a bite out of the county.
Especially when you get close to the beach.
So the final option, four, is the largest, same existing, or same, same problems with, sorry, same considerations as with option three. It is within the one-mile boundary of Chesapeake Beach municipality, and it also involves tier three properties. It is the largest, one thousand eight hundred and fourteen parcels covering thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight acres. So those are the four options. They're not, none of those are set in stone. We just kind of wanted to get, what are some directions that we could...
Right, and this is a work session, so, I mean, for me, I want to preserve as much as possible. But I would want to see what the public says. You don't know till you start, till the phone starts ringing.
And it's a little bit tricky right now, because we don't know what the state is going to say on the tier issue. So even though, you know, it's part of our next steps with the public outreach, the survey, the flyers, that outreach, we don't have a definitive answer to tell them at this point. Yes, you will have to, your property will be re-designated as tier four, or it won't affect you. So unfortunately.
So you're waiting for the state?
Yeah.
And even at that, option three and four gets into a forty-five day review, plus going out to the public.
It is, it is, it is a tight turnaround, so if we were to come back before the commissioners at either the December second meeting or the December tenth meeting, we would need to provide your, you, we would need to provide you feedback by November twentieth or December fourth. So that is a very tight turnaround to get public input on, on these issues, on these issues, especially considering we don't have a clear definitive answer from the state at this point.
And that's just to make the application date by February second.
Yeah, so RCND submits it February second. They really need our guidance by mid to late December, and that's, that's pushing it. They've been very helpful so far, and, and they, they shoulder a lot of the burden of doing applications and, and administration of this program for Calvert County. So we're very grateful for this partnership, but...
If the desire is the maximum area, the maximum expansion, it may just be ideal to do the legwork now, take the time to talk with them, have the forty-five day period, and it might not be twenty twenty-six. It might be twenty twenty-seven, just due to the timeframe that we're stuck with.
I agree. We have to start somewhere, and if you will, I put together somewhat of a suggestion, I guess, for guidance. If everybody agrees, I'll read what I put together. And that's basically have town hall information sessions to gather citizen feedback in reference to Rural Legacy interest, explain the pros and the cons of a program in detail, but not only this program, but all the other programs that are available that we talked about earlier, Jennifer. And please put emphasis on determining the number of large plots that we saw on some of the maps. And work on the mapping. The mapping is, I know it's small. You guys are trying to configure a large area into a small map, but it is hard to, quite hard to see, even if somebody is familiar with the county.
It's got to have some landmarks.
Showing the creeks, showing the creeks.
Versus those that could be developed or preserved. Rural Legacy, as you said, it's contiguous. And it's not only that. I mean, it's these other, other programs that we could throw out here to these people that they, you know, may have an option on. But include residents who have been through Rural Legacy, who have had the opportunity to have their lands preserved versus somebody through the county program. I mean, if you're able to pull some of these people in, do so. And, you know, you got the county land trust boards. You've got a wealth of knowledge on those as well, who I know for a fact have worked with Rural Legacy and seen its benefits, and seen how they were able to bargain with them in order to get that land value where it needed to be. Unfortunately, Greg Bones is not here. He wanted to put together a presentation that would show where your, your land value developing versus your land value preserving. He said actually, there's, there's a lot of instances where they're making more preserving the property than developing and preserving the property, but...
And they actually were partnering with us on one of our latest Rural Legacy easements, so we could absolutely, ACLT is still here, even if Greg is not. We could partner with them to try and give people a good idea of their options.
And get the state to...
I think, I think you're, the biggest component, and Commissioner Ireland has, has voiced this, is the education. And your maps, I agree, have to be better, like Commissioner Hand said, with, with, you know, points of interest, so everybody knows what they're looking at. But I think the education point is very, very important, because this is a decision to be made by our fellow county and not, not by us. We need to get, we need to educate them and get their feedback, and then we can proceed.
With the state decision.
You're going to have to have a better answer between tier three and tier four than what we got today.
Yes.
Option one only involves tier four properties, so that, that's not affecting option one.
And as Ron had mentioned, there had been several expansions in the past. And, you know, that is a component as well, when folks are interested in, and that occurred in the last expansion that RCND had requested. They had folks that were interested, and that helped guide some of those areas that were included. So looking at this in progressive terms is not a bad option either. And, and, and putting that idea forward, because you do have, you do have an option here to immediately not impact anyone that you could expand. So that's something to, just keeping that nugget in the back of your mind as well.
Might be interesting if you looked at the four options and identified large tracts that are still left. Option one might be easy, but I don't know how many large tracts are left in option one. I think the goal is trying to protect larger areas, and that's enticing to Rural Legacy also. So it would be interesting to see in each of those options how many large tracts are still undeveloped and eligible.
We can absolutely do that.
And along with the landmarks, so you can see, you know, what you're looking at and, and environmentally, how those large tracts that are still available would be impacted.
And I appreciate Mr. Hart's comments, Commissioner Hart's comments about, you know, how it would be nice if, if it was just simple, and who wants to participate can participate, and who doesn't, and no one else is impacted. We are hoping to have a much better answer shortly, but I appreciate the comments.
Okay. That's great. Put a lot of work into this. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Thank you, sir. To maintain decorum, the Board of County Commissioners adheres to establish procedural rules first adopted in nineteen eighty-nine that are applied in a viewpoint-neutral way only to generally disruptive or threatening behavior. As an invited speaker addressing topics pertaining to county government, please observe the following guidelines. One, all remarks and conduct must be respectful and refrain from personal attacks, inflammatory language, or disruptive behavior. Two, prior to commencing your remarks, please state your full name for the record. Three, individual speakers are allocated two minutes. The designated representatives speaking on behalf of an organization or group are allocated five minutes. Individuals seeking to influence governmental decisions are categorized as lobbyists and are required to register in advance with the Ethics Commission prior to their engagement with the board. So anyone in the room who wishes to speak, please come to the microphone.
I always try to do what Sue tells me.
Is this a Mirage? Is this Bob Estes? Am I in the Wayback Machine here?
I haven't seen you for a while either. I haven't lost it. Anyway, I'm glad I was just speaking for myself. It's good to see you all again, of course, and good to be seen. But the eyes are still not quite working, but this, this week I get glasses, but be that as it may. But I'm very encouraged by what I'm hearing from every one of you, that you all want to look for a way to make this happen and other, other programs happen as well. Makes me wonder, is there some step in between the teeny-tiny little ones that look all scraggly at the, at the bottom and all the way to the top? And I don't know if you've asked that question or not. I mean, is there a way to avoid Chesapeake Beach? I try to do that as often as possible, but anyway, something that could cut the, cut the time. I mean, another forty-five days, that's problematic, and I'm sure you all thought of that. But if you haven't, think about it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Susan DeZurich. Personal note, I wanted to thank you all for the compassion that you've shown to me and to my husband after the fire in our home, and we are slated to be back in before Christmas.
Yeah.
Ms. DeZurich, are you speaking for yourself? Thank you.
Well, my family.
He's always on.
My, also on a personal note, my husband was Navy. My middle son was Army and served in Desert Storm, and my youngest son served as a Marine in Iraq and Afghanistan. I'm very proud of them all.
That's awesome.
Thank you for your Election Hero Day proclamation. I consider it an honor to serve as an election poll worker alongside Republicans, Democrats, and Independents. All of us working together to ensure safe, secure, smooth, and accessible voting experiences for all. In the last election, I was privileged to walk, to walk through with a young Girl Scout who was working on a merit badge through the voting process. Now in these hard times, I am compelled to ask you what may be a difficult question to those who are seeking another term of election. As a Calvert County Commissioner, I ask the following. This was the oath of office each of you pledged to at your swearing-in ceremony. Constitutional oath. I, fill in your name, do promise and declare that I support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Calvert Commissioner according to the Constitution and laws of this state, and that you had to swear and it was subscribed to before Kathy P. Smith. My question to you before this campaign, before the next campaign's first speech is given, before the first donation is accepted, and especially before the first vote is cast, will you swear and abide by your word to promise and declare that you will support the Constitution of the United States, no matter who might call on you to do otherwise? And you will require members of the Sheriff's Department to do the same. Thank you so much for your truthful consideration of my question. I find it very sad that the last public comment to be made in this hearing room is a plea for your help to save our democracy. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I don't see anyone online unless Ms. Britton tells me I'm wrong.
Nope, nobody's online, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we would all say I do today. Uh, Commissioner Reports isn't on the agenda, but I assume we're gonna have them, so Commissioner Reports, Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mr. President, I had the honor of going to Saint Leonard's First Veterans Ministry Information Center to read a citation, and, um, the, the neat thing about that is, I mean, I understand the separation of church and state, but, but I guess just with my upbringing, and, and I like to hear that we don't do a meeting without prayer, without allegiance to the country. I just, I just still think that's so important, and not trying to offend anybody, but I, I tell you, they, um, veterans need all the help we can give them, and I'm thankful that there's churches and people and everything that want to go out there and try to help these folks, and, um, I just think it's great to live in a county that, that, um, prayer's still important and that the pledge is still important. And helping your fellow neighbor, you know, growing up as a kid, I've said it many, many times, there was no Ubers. Um, there was no, uh, get online and get somebody to come over. You actually had to know your neighbor, God forbid, actually know who lives in your neighborhood and say hello and who they are. I mean, you didn't have to go fishing with them every day, but at least, you know, everybody knew each other and had respect for each other, and I'm glad to still see that, uh, going. Um, Halloween, um, some have already done, uh, trunk or treats. I don't have trick or treat kids anymore. Is that still gonna be this? Is that Friday? Okay, that's when the official one is, so please be safe and careful, and, um, wish everybody a good, good Halloween.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Um, on the twenty-second of October, I attended the farm tour, and we visited the Dow Levitt Farm, the Swan Farm, Sassafras Farms, and Freedom Hill Horse Rescue. That, um, Freedom Hill Horse Rescue is on the property owned by Alex and Brandon Postow. Um, their home is Hampton Manor, and we got to meet their five-month-old baby who is just gorgeous. But one thing I want to say about the farm tour is, um, for me who has lived here for a number of years, the best part of my job as Commissioner is getting to meet the public and to see the beauty of what we do in Calver County. Um, I, I was just blown away by, uh, these farmers, by the beauty of their farms and all that they do. To be farmers, it's not an easy job, no way. There, I mean, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and the more, the more I learn about this county, the more I embrace it and love it. Um, so that was wonderful. This afternoon, I'm gonna be speaking at the dedication of the mural at Twin Beaches. I'm especially proud of that because I was a Board of Library trustee during the time when we were choosing the location. And also, we met with the architects and conveyed our vision of what we wanted to be there in Chesapeake, I'm sorry, in the Twin Beaches North and Chesapeake Beach. Um, today is National First Responders Day, and I want to give a big thank you to all of our responders in Calver County, all of you that keep us safe. And also the Scott family in Owens, Maryland, um, keep them in your prayers, see what you can do to help them. They're the family whose home burned down in Owens this past weekend. Um, Santa Scott is, um, a friend of mine, and, um, I know they would appreciate it. And Halloween, stay safe, and another, I gotta give a shout out to Katie and to Ashley. They helped me with, um, a situation in my neighborhood for two widows, and, um, prompt response. Thank you all so much. You're always on your game. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, let's go back to the farm tour. Um, there's a lot of small farmers out there that do wonderful jobs for us and citizens out there, and I think all of them need to be commended for what they do. Uh, we still have some work to do with our youth, because when a youth, you know, one of the comments was, you know, if a youth thinks your food comes from the phone, you know, call up and get your food. So, uh, we still got some education to do with our youth, but we're working on it, and Julie's team did a wonderful job for the farm tour. Uh, Commissioner Ireland and myself, we went to Neil's Estate on Thursday. Um, that community did a living shoreline. They secured grant, they worked with nonprofits to, uh, get the job done. Uh, and that community came together, and if you could just looked at, you know, the people's faces that day when we cut the ribbon on it to, to see the shoreline come back, and they still have more to go, but north, uh, the south side uh, is eroding and the north side is gaining. So it was just good that the community came together, uh, project came, um, and at the cost they wanted to and everything, but it was just a, a great, a great day down there. Um, today's our last meeting here, um, in the courthouse, but you can come over there and see us in the new building. Um, we had a, um, Health Department here today talking about cancer. There's a lot of people in our community that are dealing with cancer, and our prayers go out to all of the citizens that, families dealing with cancer at this time. Uh, and have a safe Halloween, watch out for the little ones, uh, in these subdivisions, because I know it's gonna be large, so weather's supposed to be good, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ireland?
So the twenty-first, I went to the educational support staff meeting at Full Gospel and was able to award Stephanie Patterson, uh, Commissioner's Citation for being the chest packs person of the year. It was very well deserved. The twenty-second, as we talked about the ag tour, I tell you, I, I've been to every farm except for the, um, Levitt.
Jason Levitt?
Yeah, Jason Levitt's farm. I've been, um, of course, on the Brady Farm to the east of that and to the west of Born Farm, but you talk about a beautiful place, when you roll over the backside of that farm, it was, uh, it was an eye-opener, very, very nice place. Um, the twenty-third, uh, as Commissioner Cox said, was the Neil State Shoreline Project, and that was phase one. They're looking to secure the funding, uh, for phase two. However, these nor'easters, we've been having to beat that beach up below where the, where the shoreline project is. It was kind of interesting because where I was standing and where I was, um, during the presentation, that was actually, I had crab pots there last year. So they really filled in a big area there, and they really protected that shoreline for probably close to half of the community, but the other half of the community, um, we're gonna have to be probably moving quickly on some permits to try to help them out to at least secure their shoreline, uh, till they can come up with the other part of the money for that project. Uh, the twenty-fourth, uh, Sheriff's Office did their trunk or treat, uh, it was well-attended as well. And the twenty-seventh was the, uh, Sippin Stack Ribbon Cutting, another local business, uh, they opened up right here next to O'Ganigan's. Um, two young entrepreneurs, one of them, um, had, or both of them had prior restaurant experience in that same shopping center. They came together to open up the Sippin Stack. Um, some of the employees from Economic Development who were there said they ate there, and they said the food was wonderful. The only other thing I had, we found out this morning that, um, there were several Calver County residents who couldn't get out of Jamaica. Um, that, that storm is what, over two hundred miles an hour? A catastrophic storm, so good luck to them. So that's all I have.
So as was mentioned, I want to thank Director Obergeorg and her staff for organizing a great farm tour. It's really interesting to go around and see all the new opportunities and enterprises that are going on out here. It's not like it was when we first came in this courthouse in the seventeen thirties. There's no more tobacco left anymore, but it is exciting to see all these new ventures and kids being successful. So, uh, I want to thank the Secretary of Agriculture who came down and visited on door. He's the one that said the kid answered, call Uber, get your food.
Yes.
In my experiences in Calver County schools, when I go and talk about ag, those kids know the answers, the right answers. So, uh, I think we're pretty, pretty special in that regard. Our kids are smarter than the average bear. But it was a great tour, weather was great. I want to thank the Secretary for coming down. Um, and, uh, it was a bunch of trunk or treats.
Oh, all over the place.
The kids have already gotten enough candy. I don't know why they're going out Friday night, but I'm sure they will.
You don't remember that, man?
When they made people here with us to retreat and host. But next year, we are talking about trying to organize ahead of time. If people have trunk or treats, if they want to advertise them, we put together a schedule so you know where they are, when they are, and maybe help with some of the, um, competition. Uh, because we had one this year at Hall and Point Park like we normally do, said they had over twelve hundred kids there for participants that night. And they were still competing with two other ones pretty close by, so, uh, it is crazy, because when I was going trunk or treating, trunk or treat, I don't know what we would have thought of that. But anyway, um.
Was it good about four houses back then?
Maybe six, I mean.
Three miles between them.
Right, right.
Had to get me in good shape.
A favorite one was our neighbor, because she always had a donut for me.
Oh, no kidding?
Oh, yeah, my house got candy, but I got a donut.
That's awesome.
Special, but, uh, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, it's, it is a special day. We're gonna leave this place, um, been here since seventeen thirty, and a lot has changed, some not so much. As you heard in the report, back in those days, they were talking about roads and infrastructure issues, just like we are today. Uh, you wouldn't have think they'd had those challenges with one in two thousand, well, residents, but they did. Uh, but, uh, it's been a great place. It's served all the previous commissioners and us very well. And, uh, it is gonna be strange going to a new facility, so, but we do welcome all of you there. Um, when you enter the mural, when is that due to be put in, the collage?
Still on the work, sir.
So we've got a colo, colo, collage being put together to try to represent all the history of Calver County. So when you come in eventually on the right wall, there'll be a big collage representing all of Calver's history. So we think that'd be very interesting, and the floor is pretty cool. It's got a map. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's a very nice facility, and I want to thank all the staff for all their work. Put, can, through construction, through moving, just about everybody's moved, it's been very smooth. That's just another fact of our dedicated staff and how good they are at what they do, so, um, very appreciative of all their efforts to get us into this new building. So unfortunately, I guess I'm gonna have to ask for a motion.
Sir, I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General Provisions Article Section three dash three oh five B. One, I to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, and performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the board is jurisdiction. And B three, to consider the acquisition of real property for a valid purpose and matters directly related thereto.
Second.
I have motion and second, then we go into exact session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please, uh, keep our employees in your prayers that are in Jamaica today, and, uh, we'll see you across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.